Because it's not wrote correctly. It's stating that a public hearing was held on August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty. Today is September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. And there was already a published notice ran in the paper record.
That's correct.
What date was that?
I don't have the date.
That was, uh... At the very end of August. Because when we submitted that into the, uh...
Do you have, I mean, do you have, there's a copy of that?
I do have a copy of that.
Okay, okay. Okay, so that, that's just some technicalities I noticed within the, the resolution. And then, I don't know when you're ready for discussion, but I've got a lot of questions. And that's where Chairman Bowden, I didn't know, maybe other commissioners had questions if, if this perhaps might be tabled to another meeting because of all of the questions I have. There's a lot of errors between what was posted online, because I, I did a comparison of twelve that was posted online from, I believe, the two thousand and eighteen plan compared to what you're recommending tonight as far as the puts and takes. And none of them lined up. Well, I shouldn't say none of them, there, there were some that didn't line up, so I, I have questions. And then also with the, the dollar amounts within the capital improvement schedules, I noticed they weren't priority-based, like they were in the twenty, I'm guessing, I was looking at the two thousand and eighteen plan online, it said new. But I think there might be a more current plan that maybe had been updated, because there was references to two thousand and nineteen from the puts and takes that I could see. And again, just asking, I like to see the priority-based. I think we're still doing that. So like I said, I just had a lot of questions, didn't know if other commissioners did, and there's, um, the, the resolution is not correct as far as dates.
Would you like to answer?
No, the priorities usually, they are prioritized on the CIP. They usually have a priority on the CIP. There is too much information to actually incorporate all that information in the CIE. But the prioritization is part of the CIP process.
Okay.
Which is a five-year outlook.
Right, right, the five-year schedule that was posted online has got a priority. The one that came out in our packets does not have a priority. So I didn't know why we don't, no longer have a priority with it. I understand the further stuff out, but the five-year, shouldn't there be a priority listed on here?
It will be based on the CIP.
So the answer is no on the CIE, I guess.
Okay, I didn't understand the, I didn't understand that difference, Gons. And, um, uh, then going back to literally, I mean, there was, like, like, I wanted to know what document was looked at when the revisions were made, because it's not the one that was online.
When you refer documents, what specifically are you referring to?
Well, so just to do a stare and compare of, you know, what's in my packet as being proposed changes. The most current copy that I could access was what was online. And when I look at that document that's currently, even has a little new next to it, um, it looks like it's referencing stuff from two thousand and nineteen, which is fine, but I didn't know if, if, I mean, if I have this question, this is supposed to be a public hearing, the public might have this question. You know, they're not, it doesn't look like they're referencing the most current documentation for puts and takes. And then, um, with the different, like, the transportation mapping, um, and the, not mapping, but the prioritizing and the projects, shouldn't we be also updating, oh, sorry, other parts of the comprehensive plan such as the transportation section? And implementation in chapter eleven? Because there's reference to a new HDR, hold on, that I didn't see in here, but I saw in here we were revising, so I didn't know if the revision needed to happen as well within implementation. I, I just, to me, it seemed like there was a lot of inconsistencies, and I would like more time to look at this, and I think staff might need more time to look at this, because it seemed very, uh, we're missing some things.
I think, I don't know what you have, but probably you have a, but probably a outdated.
Okay, well, it's, it's on the website, and when I went out to the, it said new next to it. So to me...
I didn't post it, so what I have here is what was submitted to the, uh, as part of the packet.
Right, yeah, yeah, as part of the packet, I have the packet, but, Gons, what I'm referring, like, looking at the puts and takes to see what was in the old chapter twelve out online comparing to what you're requesting, the changes, and what you're asking the public to provide input to, the changes, they don't mash, they don't match up.
I'll make sure that I'll, I'll compare both and see where the...
Yeah, and, and that's why, Gons, I didn't know if, if it would behoove us and the rest of the commission to, to table this item for the next meeting, to allow you the time to make sure all the edits are done correctly, and also to make sure, and, and I know this can happen later, but, I mean, it's, it's a resolution, to where I think the resolution needs to have the right date on it. So I, I didn't know what others felt before we went through the motion of, of the public hearing and additional questions and discussion if, if it would be who of us to table this item until we can make sure everything's lined up and squared. That was, that was my question and discussion point, Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else have any discussion or is willing to go ahead and table? Go ahead.
I'm fine tabling it, but I did have a question in what was listed here, as part of the changes, but, um, one hundred and seventy-fifth Street at Waverly has been under construction for eight months or so. And I see in here that there is, uh, center street sidewalk improvements in the five-year schedule. I didn't know if as part of that construction, if sidewalks are being connected that are being ran to Waverly, if they're being ran on the west side of Waverly to connect to the sidewalks at Kill Creek, to bring that area of town to this area of town.
I cannot answer that, I don't have the details.
Okay. If, if we table this, I, that, that's a question that I would have for this.
Okay. Commissioner Ham, did you have any questions?
I did not.
Okay. Commissioner Deaton, Commissioner Hansen, Commissioner McNear. You're free to make the motion if you would like.
I would like to, uh, make a motion that we table this agenda item to the next upcoming planning commission meeting for, um, the public hearing and, uh, commission discussion.
Second.
Okay, we have a miss, uh, motion on the floor of Commissioner Mater and a second by Commissioner McNear, is any further discussion on the motion?
I have a question about the motion.
Forward.
It's forward.
Forward, sorry, forward.
Yes.
If it gets tabled, since we had to put this in the newspaper, will we have to push it out even further to make sure that we put another notice in the legal record and
Yes.
all of that stuff? And do we have enough time for, to get that in before the next meeting?
Yeah, what's the, uh, does it have a calendar?
So then the application schedule, right, for the next meeting, so the application deadline, well, that's normal applications, um, would be Friday, September eleventh, but... Oh, the meeting date's October twenty-seventh, so plenty of time, right?
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
I just want to make sure if we're going to table it to the next meeting that we have enough time to get everything done.
So we're not tabling it again.
That was it.
Any other questions on the motion? Okay, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against, any extensions? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gons, I appreciate it.
Okay, regular agenda item number two, A, P P dash two zero dash one zero, consider preliminary plat for under six lots, single-family subdivision.
Good evening, uh, and I'm, I do want to apologize for the last one, uh, we were trying to have that up on the, uh, the, uh, last month's agenda, and I did not change the dates on the resolution, so I wanted to apologize to you and also, Gons, uh, we'll get our things straightened out.
Thank you.
And we'll get together with Gons, too. This is item two, Symphony Farms, phase five and six, preliminary plat, P P dash twenty dash zero two, and final plat, F P dash twenty dash zero two. A little history on this subdivision, uh, the property was a part of a larger annexation back in two thousand and three, uh, but then in two thousand and five, a preliminary plat was approved, but, uh, there was never a final plat on this project. Uh, since then, a new developer has taken, uh, taken a hold of this property and is developing it. And, uh, as you can see from the green portion, this is an extension, uh, for the per, uh, preliminary plat, this is a, an extension of our existing planted, uh, phase four and I think two. Uh, the comp plan identifies this parcel for low-density residential. Uh, the preliminary plat, uh, this is a one hundred and six lot, uh, subdivision, and is located just north of one hundred and sixty-seventh street and to the east of Kill, uh, Ke, Kill Creek Road on approximately forty acres. Again, the property has never been platted and is undeveloped. There are multiple points of access into the subdivision, and it, it is, as mentioned before, is a continuation of Symphony Farms, phase four and phase two. All utilities are available to the site. Staff findings for the preliminary plat, the application is in accordance with the comprehensive plan, it complies with the requirements of the land development code. Uh, any phasing proposed in the application is clearly indicated and demonstrates a logical and coordinated approach to the development. Uh, any impacts identified by specific studies or technical reports, including a preliminary review of stormwater, are mitigated with generally accepted and sound planning, engineering, and urban design solutions that reflect long-term solutions and sound fiscal investment. The application does not deter any existing or future development on adjacent property from meeting the goals and policy of the comprehensive plan, and the design does not impede the construction of anticipated planned future public infrastructure within the area. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat for Symphony Farms, phase five and six, preliminary plat, with the conditions outlined in the recommended motion.
If anyone from the public would like to speak on this matter? Is the podium, no one here from the public speak on the matter? I'll start to my right, Commissioner Ford, for Commissioner comments.
Uh, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Ham?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Mater?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Deaton?
No questions.
Commissioner Ford?
No questions.
I mean, Commissioner Scott, that's fine. Hanson, Commissioner McNear?
No questions.
Okay, I don't have any either, so I'd accept the motion.
After review of case P P dash two zero dash one zero, preliminary plat for Symphony Farms, phase five and six, tax IDs C F two two one four one five dash two zero one seven and C F two two one four one five dash two zero one three, located northeast of the intersection of West one hundred and sixty-seventh street and Kill Creek Road. A preliminary plat dated August seventh, two thousand and twenty, and staff report dated September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, the planning commission approves the application as proposed, provided that the following conditions are met. One, approval of a stormwater management plan and traffic impact study by the public works department.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Ford and a second by Commissioner McNear, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any extensions? Motion passes seven zero. Okay. P P twenty dash zero nine.
Next one is, uh, this is the, the final plat, as was depicted in that earlier map that you saw, this is the area of, uh, the project area. It is, uh, includes fifty-four standard suburban lots on approximately sixteen acres. Uh, this is all part of an overall plan for a four hundred and seventy-five lot subdivision on two hundred and fifty-six acres that was part of a preliminary plat approved back in two thousand and five. Uh, since the original preliminary plat was presented, it's gone through changes over time to what has, uh, been presented today. And staff findings on the final plat, the final plat is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat and the land development code. The request for final plating is consistent with the staff's goals and policies of the city. No deviations are requested with this plat, and excise tax will be levied with this plat.
Thank you, and on the, uh, first one, I didn't have the, give the developer a chance that an advocate come up and speak, uh, if he'd like to speak now, you can. Okay, no one come to the podium, if anyone from the public would like to speak on this matter, you can approach the podium. No one from the public, Commissioner Discussion and Commissioner Ford?
No questions.
Commissioner Ham?
No questions.
Commissioner Mater?
No comment, questions, sorry.
Commissioner Deaton?
No questions or comments, right?
Commissioner Hanson?
No questions.
Commissioner McNear?
No questions.
I don't have any either, so I'd accept the motion on this item.
I'll make a motion that after review of application, F P dash two zero dash zero nine, a final plat for Symphony, Symphony Farms, the, I believe that would be the fifth plat, tax IDs, uh, C F two two one four one five dash two zero one seven and C F two two one four one five dash two zero one three, located northeast of the intersection of West one hundred and sixty-seventh street and Kill Creek Road, and final plat dated August seventh, two thousand and twenty, and staff report dated September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. The planning commission approves the applications proposed, provided the following conditions are met, items one through three in the staff report, and recommends the governing body accept the dedication of right-of-way easements.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I'll give the one to the second to Commissioner Hanson. So I have a motion by Commissioner Mater, a second by Commissioner Hanson, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any extensions? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. All right, item number three, A, P D P dash two zero dash zero four, hold public hearing for revised preliminary development plan.
Do you need a motion for that hearing?
Uh, no, because I'll speak first.
Uh, this is item three A, Regency West, uh, preliminary development plan, twenty dash zero four, a revised preliminary development plan. The proposed three-lot mixed-use development on fifteen-point, this is a, uh, proposed three-lot mixed-use development on fifteen-point-two acres. Uh, this property was annexed into the city as part of a larger area back in nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, in two thousand and four, a development plan was brought forth before the commission and approved the rezoning to its current districts. However, with the addition of the daycare and increase in the amount of apartment units, uh, the staff felt that this was a major enough change that it should be brought back to the commission as a, as a planned development, as a revised planned development. Uh, these parcels are not developed and have, uh, been in agricultural production for many years. As part of this development, uh, uh, the apartment side of this, uh, development is a hundred and ninety-six unit apartment complex. Uh, the daycare on lot one is an eleven thousand five hundred square foot daycare center, and on two point zero nine acres, uh, is a commercial plat that actually fronts out onto Gardner Road. Uh, all these lots will be accessed by a private, uh, access drive, which is, which is located just to the north of lot two. Uh, staff findings on the revised preliminary development plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan regarding a variety of housing types for the area, connectivity and open space described in the new residential, residential growth areas. It provides for a transition from commercial to higher-density residential to the east, and, uh, the plan, uh, reflects generally accepted and sound planning and urban design principles by providing a variety of housing types in the area and community, fiscally responsible extension of utilities and, uh, location nearby employment corridors. They are requesting one deviation, uh, from section seventeen, zero nine, zero three zero, from the required parking, table nine dash three, parking standards, general civic slash institutional, design performance standards. Uh, the deviation from the standard would not necessarily impact surrounding properties and will allow for the safe movement of their parents and children, uh, at certain times of the day, and the staff, uh, does support this deviation. Again, they are going from, uh, a, a, uh, twenty-nine spaces required, uh, to forty-one spaces, uh, thirty-nine regular and two ADA. Staff recommends approval of the revised preliminary development plan for Regency West with the conditions outlined in the recommended motion. Uh, the plan, uh... It's like I got a slide that's messed up here, sorry about that. Uh, the plan reflects generally acceptable and, uh, I've already read that. We'll just go with the recommendation. There's a suggested motion.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the, uh, public hearing. If the applicant would like to approach the podium to speak, if they so wish. State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Lance Scott, CFS Engineers, fourteen twenty-one, East one hundred and fourth street, suite one hundred, Kansas City, Missouri. We reviewed the, uh, staff report and concur with all the conclusions in the staff report, and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, does anyone from the commission have any questions for that? During the public hearing? Okay, we don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time of the public hearing, any, uh, anyone from the public can approach the podium? No one here from the public? I will accept the motion to close the public hearing.
Salute.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner McNear and a second by Commissioner Ford. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against, any extensions? Public hearing is closed. Any commissioner discussion on this item?
No questions.
Nope.
Okay, I'm not going one by one on this.
I just have one little question, um, I was kind of curious why, so I was curious to know a little bit more about the daycare center, is this, um, like, is it like little building blocks, like children's lighthouse? And there wasn't a lot of information in our report on specifically who's going to be operating the daycare center, is that, is that not necessarily something we discuss at this, in this forum?
Typically, the who, it's, it's about the development, not necessarily the owner.
Okay.
So...
So, okay.
Uh, they could just put in a daycare and then have whatever, whoever run it at some point.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions? Okay, I'd accept the motion.
After review of applications, P D P dash two zero dash zero four for Regency West, property located on the west side of Gardner Road, approximately two hundred feet north of one hundred and eighty-eighth street, tax IDs C F two two one four three five dash four zero zero one, C F two two one four three five dash four zero zero three, C F two two one four three five dash four zero zero four, and C F two two one four three five dash four zero zero five, a revised preliminary development plan dated August sixth, two thousand and twenty, and staff report dated September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, the planning commission recommends the governing body approve the application as proposed, provided the following conditions are met. One, the applicant shall provide for a common area maintenance agreement or property maintenance common area maintenance, or property maintenance agreement for all common areas, including the infrastructure within all access and sidewalk easements. Two, stormwater plan and traffic study should be approved prior to approval of any final development plan. Three, approval of a deviation to allow twelve additional parking spaces on lot one.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Ford and a second by Commissioner Near, McNear, any, uh, further discussion on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
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 Any against, any extensions? Motion passes seven zero. I have three B, P P dash two zero dash zero nine, preliminary plat for three lots subdivision. Pretty sure that's you again, though.
Sorry, I'm trying to keep all these straight, so forgive me.
Just glad to be on this.
All right, item three, uh, three B, preliminary plat, uh, P P dash twenty zero nine for Regency West. And I'm not going to go into great detail on the actual plat, we've already seen the, uh, the preliminary development plan, which is actually part of the preliminary plat, but we still have to vote on it, so. Uh, the staff findings for the preliminary plat, uh, this plat supports various goals and policies of the conference plan, the plat meets an exception for the block size and connectivity standards. The plat, uh, will meet the remain, uh, remainder of the L E C standards through the preliminary development plan process, which was already approved, and this does not impede future infrastructure improvements to the area. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat for Regency West with the conditions outlined below in the recommended motion.
Okay, thank you. Staff wants to speak on this matter, then you can come to the podium.
Lance Scott, CFS Engineers, fourteen twenty-one, East one hundred and fourth street, suite one hundred, Kansas City, Missouri. Yeah, again, we, we concur with staff recommendations and would appreciate your, um, consideration for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, um, available?
Thank you. Uh, it's not a public hearing item, anyone from the public would like to speak? No one here, so we'll go with Commissioner Discussion, Commissioner Ford?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Ham?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Mater?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Deaton?
No questions.
Commissioner Hanson? Commissioner McNear?
No questions.
I got everybody's name right, so that's good. All right, I accept, uh, I don't have anything, so at this time I accept the motion.
After review of applications, P P dash two zero dash zero nine, for Regency West, property located on the west side of Gardner Road, approximately two hundred feet north of one hundred and eighty-eighth street, tax IDs C F two two one four three five dash four zero zero one, C F two two one four three five dash four zero zero three, C F two two one four three five dash four zero zero four, and C F two two one four three five dash four zero zero five, a preliminary plat dated August sixth, two thousand and twenty, and staff report dated September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, the planning commission recommends the governing body approve the applications as proposed, provided that the following conditions met. One, approval of final traffic impact study and stormwater management plan.
Thank you, I accept the second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner McNear and a second by Commissioner Hanson, do we have any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against, any extensions? Motion passes seven zero. All right, item three C, C U P dash twenty dash zero one, hold public hearing for conditional use permit for a daycare.
Uh, this is item three C, uh, this is for a conditional use permit, uh, C U P twenty dash zero one, Regency West Daycare Center. Uh, again, this is, uh, the conditional use permit for Regency West Daycare Center, located, uh, on the west side of Gardner Road, approximately two hundred feet north of one hundred and eighty-eighth street, and more specifically behind Orson's, uh, Family and Home Store. eighty-eighth street, and more specifically behind Orshlin's Family and Home Store. And it's also Lot Number One of the preliminary plat. The site is currently zoned RP five to the east, as mentioned before, is Orshlin's store. To the southwest and north is also part of the overall plan for the Regency West plan development. Daycare facilities are allowed in residentially zoned areas only as a conditional use. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit for the Regency West Daycare Center within the Regency West development. The proposed use is classified as daycare center use, defined in the Gardner Land Development Code, as a service use, providing recreation, education, and supervisory service for children or adults on a regular basis away from their primary residence, not including schools, in-home, in-home daycare or residential care facilities. As you see, this is the elevations of the daycare facility. They do have nice architectural features with the stone veneer and wainscoting around the front, and as mentioned before, it is an eleven thousand five hundred square foot The proposed use complies with both land development code and the comprehensive plan, and the proposed use is surrounded by compatible zoning districts and will not negatively impact any future developments within the area. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with the conditions outlined below.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If the applicant's present, the applicant can approach the podium.
Lance Scott, CFS Engineers, fourteen twenty-one, East one hundred and Fourth Street, Suite one hundred, Kansas City, Missouri. Again, we reviewed the staff report and, you know, we appreciate everything Bob's done to help us on, all the way through this process, and we concur with the conditions and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions for that, for the public hearing? We don't have any, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, anyone from the public can approach the podium to speak on this issue. No one's here from the public, so I would accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner McNear and a second from Commissioner Deet and to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against, any abstentions? Motion passes seven zero. Public hearing is closed. Commissioner discussion? Commissioner Ford?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Ham? Commissioner Mader?
Just a, a point of order question, and it's been a while since we've had any conditional use permits, and I just wanted to make sure that I was following along correctly, that we would have the conditional use permit prior to having our discussions regarding the final development plan and final plat. It, it just, it seems out of order for me, and it's been a while since we've had one of these, Bob, so it'll be the same question on our next business item as well. Can you help me understand that a little bit?
I can, I can.
Thank you.
So, this is kind of an unusual situation because it already has the proper zoning, so, which is why we went ahead and decided to do the final, the preliminary development plan, the preliminary plat before this. On the next item that's up on the agenda, which is Lexiconostoga, we actually have the CUP going before.
Right, and, and it's the exact same thing that's happening, like, I guess, I guess why, tell me, okay, for this one, why are we having the CUP prior to the final development and final plat? Why are we doing the CUP now? Shouldn't it be at the end? And that, you explained the last item, so thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I have multiple people talking to me.
No worries.
Again, this, this does have the proper zoning, so if you're going, the CUP is, is kind of almost like a rezoning type position, that already has the, had the proper zoning in the R five, RP, actually RP five.
I didn't realize that the CUP just based on, like I said, it's been a while since we've seen a CUP, but I thought conditional use permits were because it was going above and beyond something other than just zoning. A conditional use permit can only be active for, you know, a certain amount of time, so I just, I didn't want the, you know, we'll say the time to start ticking now if everything moves along, and I believe they're only valid for what, two years, a year?
I think it's two.
I may, it might be, I can't, I think it is two years as well, but I just, like I said, it, Bob, it's been a while since we've had a CUP in the first place, and this one comes with a lot of other items, so I just didn't understand why the conditional use permit was between the prelim and the final items. And, and again, the zoning might be one thing, but I thought there were some other conditions, so I, I just, it's been a while, just needed a refresher. So, just as long as we're following the correct order was my main question.
Yeah, it was actually a chose, a choice internally to, to put that at that, at that section right there.
Where it is.
Whereas, again, the one on the next agenda is, is at a different location.
Right, yeah, I, that's, I just wanted to make sure we were following procedure.
Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Deet?
No questions.
Commissioner Hanson?
Nope.
Commissioner McNear? I have nothing further, so at this time I accept a motion. Or, yeah.
I'd make that motion. After review of applications, CUP dash two zero dash zero one, a request for a conditional use permit for the Regency West Daycare Center located on the west side of Gardner Road, approximately two hundred feet north of one hundred and eighty-eighth street, a portion of tax ID CF two two one four three five dash four zero zero three, and CF two two one four three five dash four zero zero four, and site plan dated August sixth, twenty twenty, and staff report dated September twenty-two, twenty twenty. The planning commission recommends the governing body approve the conditional use permit application as proposed, provided the following conditions are met. One, this conditional use permit request shall not be approved prior to the approval of the preliminary development plan. Two, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall submit copies of all required state of Kansas permits and licenses.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, a second by Commissioner McNear. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against, any abstentions? Motion passes second zero. Three D, FDP dash two zero dash zero five, consider final development plan for daycare facility.
Item three D and E, Regency West, final development plan, FDP twenty dash zero four, and final plat FP twenty dash zero eight. And you guys seen this area before with the outline, as mentioned in the preliminary development plan and CUP presentation, this basically is revised development plan, the petition only addresses for this final development plan, Lot One of the overall Regency West This shows an overall kind of a parking schematic and turn radius for emergency vehicles to be able to get in and out of the site. We did have talks with the Johnson County Fire District One, and the reason why we don't need secondary access is they believe that they can reach all sides of the buildings as, as existing, and also utilizing the fire lane from Orshlin's. This is the landscaping plan for the development. We have a lot of green space, and the lighter green area is kind of an enclosed play area for, for the kids. Seen that before. Staff findings for the final development plan, the final is generally in compliance with the preliminary development plan. The project is consistent with various policies in the comprehensive plan. The proposed arrangement of the building and open space is consistent with good planning and engineering practices and principles. The architecture and building design uses quality materials and the style is appropriate for the context. Staff recommend, recommendation of the final development plan, staff recommends approval of the final development plan for Regency West's first phase with the conditions outlined in the recommended motion.
Good, thank you. The applicant would like to speak, you can choose to.
Lance Scott, CFS Engineers, fourteen twenty-one, East one hundred and Fourth Street, Suite one hundred, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one three one. We concur with all the staff recommendations in the staff report and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for the applicant while he's there? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner discussion? Commissioner Ford?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Commissioner Ham?
No questions.
Commissioner Mader?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Deet?
No questions.
Commissioner Hanson?
No questions.
Commissioner McNear?
No questions.
I have none either, at this time I'll accept the motion.
After review of the application, FDP dash two zero dash zero five, a final development plan for Regency West first plat, on a portion of tax ID CF two two one four three five dash four zero zero three, and CF two two one four three five dash four zero zero four, a final development plan dated August sixth, twenty twenty, and staff report dated September twenty-second, twenty twenty. The planning commission approves the application as proposed, provided the following conditions are met. The applicant shall obtain approval of the final stormwater management plan and traffic impact studies from the public works department, and two, approved deviation for additional parking spaces on Lot One from the preliminary development plan.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Deet and a second by Commissioner Ford. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against, any abstentions? Motion passes seven zero. Three E, FP dash two zero dash zero eight, consider final plat for daycare facility.
We don't usually get to letter E, do we? Item three, you have final plat, twenty dash zero eight, Regency West, first plat, final plat. Again, this is Lot One of the Regency West development. I kind of highlighted the access easement. The area just to the east of this access easement is where the existing road is located, and they're extending this private drive to be able to provide access to, to the Lot Staff findings for the final plat, the final plat is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat. No deviations are requested with this plat. Excise tax will be levied with this plat. Staff recommends approval of the final plat for Regency West, first plat with the conditions outlined in the recommended motion.
Thank you, Bob. If the applicant wants to speak, they can approach the podium at this time. If not, you don't need to. Okay, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Ford?
I do have one.
Okay.
The site access is to the south of where Orshlin is right now, and I'm sure the traffic impacts of it will show that it's fine. I was just curious, since the stoplights going in one hundred and eighty-eight, with one hundred and eighty-eight turning on one hundred and ninety-first street, the very next street would have turned in for apartments and a daycare facility. Is there going to be like another stoplight right here, or how are they going to handle traffic in that area?
Right now, there's actually, and it will be addressed on the final development plan and final plat for the rest of this development. We actually have shown on the preliminary development plan, we have two access, access points that have been added to this site, one on the north side of the development and one on the south side.
Okay. I was just curious, just looking at what I had in front of me, it just seemed like, you know, you could traffic push through to the intermodal at a stoplight, and then, you know, approximately two hundred feet to the north, you have a street where everyone's going to be turning left into this new development. So.
Anything further?
No.
Commissioner Ham?
He answered my question.
Okay, Commissioner Mader?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Deet?
Nope.
Commissioner Hanson?
Nothing.
Commissioner McNear?
My thoughts were addressed.
I have nothing further, so at this time I'd accept a motion.
After review of application, FP dash two zero dash zero eight, a final plat for Regency West, first plat, a portion of tax ID CF two two one four three five dash four zero zero three, and CF two two one four three five dash four zero zero four, and final plat dated August sixth, twenty twenty, and staff report dated September twenty-second, twenty twenty. The planning commission approves the application as proposed, provided the following conditions are met. One, preliminary plat, PP dash two zero dash zero nine, revised PDP two zero dash zero four shall be approved prior to the release of the final plat FP two zero dash zero eight for recording. Two, approval of both the traffic impact study and stormwater management plan by the City of Gardner Public Works Department. Three, provide maintenance agreement for shared access easements prior to release of the plat for recording. Four, payment of excise tax, the city recommends the governing body accept the dedication right of way and easements.
Second?
Second.
And the motion by Commissioner McNear and a second by Commissioner Deet. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against, any abstentions? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Okay, item number four A, CUP dash two zero dash zero two, hold a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a ninety-five unit manufactured mobile home community.
And the reason why we chose to do the CUP for this one is because the CUP actually covers the entire site, whereas Regency West only covered a portion of it, so hopefully that also helps clarify things. Item four, Lakes of Conostoga, CP twenty dash zero two, conditional use permit for Lakes of Conostoga, a ninety-five unit manufactured mobile home community located at the southeast corner of East Santa Fe Street and Conostoga Drive. This is a picture looking southwest from East Santa Fe, looking northwest from East Santa Fe. The use is across the street. Looking northeast. Actually, that looks like you're, we're looking southeast from East Santa Fe. And looking north from the Conostoga Warren intersection. This site is currently zoned R two, MP, and C three. North of the property are commercial industrially zoned parcels that are commercial, that are commercial industrial in use and contain self-storage businesses, out-of-body businesses, a pet store, and a three, and three single-family homes. Abutting the east property boundary of is the Conostoga Estates Mobile Home Community, zoned MP. To the south is another Conostoga Mobile Home Community, zoned MP, and to the west is undeveloped land, zoned CP three, for the Gardner Business Center. Parcel is indicated for light industrial and office park use on the future land use plan of the comprehensive plan. Although requested MP three zoning district is not a compatible zoning designation within this land use category, staff is supportive of the development request for the following reasons. The proposed site is located directly adjacent to existing manufacturing mobile home residential community with industrial and commercial type uses located to the north of the property across East Santa Fe Street and to the west of the property across Conostoga Drive, which act as a natural buffer between conflicting uses. With the approval of this request, the proposed development will be a continuation of an already existing residential development of the median surrounding area. Additional landscaping and design features have been provided by the applicant along with public right of way to enhance the buffer between uses. And also, the development as proposed will provide affordable and attainable housing options for people residing and working in the City of Gardner. Next side shows the layout of the preliminary development plan, and as you can see, the layout is quite different than what is normally. layout is quite different than what is normally on a mobile home park. There's a little bit more space in between the units, and they actually have, some of them have carports. After working with the applicant's engineer and also the applicant, they've agreed to do a little beef up on the landscape around the buffer, basically everything that's adjacent to Conestoga and East Santa Fe Street. Staff recommendation, staff recommends the planning commission recommend approval of application CUP dash twenty dash zero two, a request for a conditional use permit for the Lakes of Conestoga, located at the southeast corner of East Santa Fe Street and Conestoga Drive. Tax ID CF two three one four three zero dash one zero one two, a staff report dated September twenty-second, twenty twenty, a site plan dated September eleventh, twenty twenty, to the government by with the following conditions. This conditional use permit request shall not be approved prior to the approval of the preliminary development plan and associated rezoning.
You good, Bob?
Sorry.
Good.
Okay.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing if the applicant would like to speak and approach the podium.
Good evening. Got a brief PowerPoint presentation I'd like to present to you. First introduce myself, my name's Curtis Holland, I'm an attorney with the Pulsonelli Law Firm. For the record, my address is nine hundred West Forty-Eighth Place, Suite nine hundred, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one one two. Would like to introduce my client, I think they're here, I'm not sure, by video, and I was told they could blink in, and if there were any questions, maybe they could even answer questions, I'm not sure that that was available to them. They tried to log in, but it wasn't connected back, so hopefully they're streaming, but would like to introduce my client, Green Court Partners, and John Lyons and Josh Collin Brenner with Green Court Partners are here and watching from their offices, probably in Chicago. And then also, would like to introduce our civil engineer on the project with Phelps Engineering, which who is Judd Clausen, and Judd is here to answer any questions you all might have with regard to engineering, drainage, lots, landscaping, all that stuff. His firm did all that work, and so Judd's here to answer any of those kinds of questions. I am going to make a brief presentation, and if I can, I'd like to make these remarks applicable to the next two items, rather than come back up and repeat what I'm, what I'm going to say now. That way, we can make this quicker. I would like to thank staff to start for their hard work, both Bob Case and Laura Bergy, who I think is watching from an office in Oklahoma City, but in any event, they were very instrumental in working with us on this plan in terms of suggestions and things that we did to modify the plan to make it better, to address some of the concerns that they had. And fire department had some, had some concerns, we made some pretty good modifications on the plan to address some of the fire department's concerns, because when we started this project, it was a completely enclosed, if you will, property, it didn't have access to adjoining public streets, the fire department didn't like that, so we ended up bringing in access to the east on our main street. So, we're able to work with staff to satisfy a lot of the concerns that they had, and I just wanted to say thank you to Bob and Laura especially for their hard work on, and working with us on this. I want to introduce you to Green Court Partners, who I mentioned at the beginning of this as the owner and developer of the park. Green Court Partners is a private, is that not, did I push the wrong button, Bob? Let me go back. There we go, I did. Green Court Partners is a private real estate equity firm that owns and develops properties across the United States, and they've been in business for approximately fifteen years, started in two thousand and two or so, and now have fifteen properties like what we're talking about tonight, manufactured home properties in five different states, in five different states. They are very successful at what they do, and I would tell you, I worked with them a couple of years ago when they first acquired the Conestoga Manufactured Home Community, which I have outlined here, hopefully you can see. The outline in red is the existing Manufactured Home Community Park area that was acquired by Green Court Partners in two thousand and eighteen. And they, one of the things they like to do when they come into a community like this is to invest in, in the park, in the community, so that they provide upgrades to the community, and I can tell you, that was done here. They've spent over two million dollars of investment into this community, in terms of upgrading, upgrades to the streets, upgrades to the clubhouse, they added a dog park, they added illuminated walking trails, some basketball courts, and a grilling gazebo, all to increase the community feel and residential feel for their residents and their community. This Manufactured Home Community has some history here with the City of Gardner, and on this aerial photo here to, that you see, the portions of the community that are on the right side of the page, which would be the eastern side of their existing community, were actually developed in the early seventies. And the portions that are to the west, if you will, left side of the page, were later developed in the, in the eighties and into the nineties, under the, some of the early development was under the county, it was in the county at that time, and then these properties were annexed into the, into this community, into the City of Gardner. And I think the later phases were actually developed under the codes at that time of the City of Gardner. And you can see essentially what's there, and tonight, what we're talking about is the vacant piece of ground, undeveloped ground to the west, it's outlined in the yellow here. And as I mentioned, they like to come into the area and invest in the community, bring upgrades into the community, and that's what they did here. And one of the things also too, that I didn't mention, but wanted to, is that they brought an enhanced screening into their protocols here for, so when their residents come in, they're actually doing some, some background checks and bringing in hopefully what they believe are, you know, quality of residents that would, that would take care of their properties and fit in well with the community. And I wanted to mention that they work very, very well with the Gardner Police Community, and the community policing officer here that frequents this property, Erica Drinkard, actually commented on the, I want to get to that, provided a letter to us to recommend, or at least say recommend, to compliment us, I think's the better word. She frequents, frequents our community, and she has noticed since the change in ownership by Green Court two years ago, the improvements that were made, and, and I think now she likes to be there, and whereas in the past, she says that when she started out, it was less than a desirable place to live, let alone patrol. But now that with the new management and the upgrades to the community, she's very, very happy with what's there, and, and I think likes, and I think that just speaks to Green Court and what they like to do. I mentioned before that they had made some improvements, I want to show you some, some pictures, there's the entry, entry sign to the existing Conestoga Community, there's the clubhouse area, these are some of the homes that they've brought in. One of the things they've done is brought in newer homes. There were some old, old homes that weren't in very good condition, so they brought in some newer homes and, and into the communities that they have, and, and they will have new homes in this new area that we're talking about, this, this development that we're talking about tonight, but I wanted to show you an example of what these homes are like. As they invested in this community, they really came to like and love being here in Gardner, and so what did they want to do? They wanted to expand their opportunity to perhaps develop their own community here from the ground up, which is what they did, and which is what we're doing with this proposal. So, I, I know that Bob went over the site plan with you, and I did want to just talk briefly about the site plan. Again, this gives them an opportunity to design and develop a community from the ground up, it's a vacant greenfield, it's adjacent to their other properties which they own. The difference here is they get to start afresh and anew, whereas they inherited what was their last, with the previous acquisition. So, one of the things Bob's mentioned is that they, they did locate the homes, gave them greater, greater space and area for the home sites. The home sites here are a footprint of about fifty-six feet by twenty-eight feet, which is a pretty good footprint for a home site, but one of the things that they did too, which is different than some of the other communities, is they spread the homes out. So, by that, I mean, within the code, the minimum home site area that you're required to have is four thousand square feet per home site area, and what they've done here, their average home site area is nine thousand four hundred ninety-six feet, so it's more than double what the minimum code requirement is, and so they spread their homes out, which gives it more of a traditional, single-family type feel, more open space, the, the homes themselves are located, and this is by code, twenty feet apart from, from each other, and so really it's the equivalent of a ten-foot side yard setback, which is pretty good in R one for single-family homes like this. And so, they worked with Phelps Engineering to design and lay out the, the site itself. I would mention that all of the streets that you see here are private streets, so they will be hundred percent maintained by our ownership group, which means the city doesn't have to spend tax dollars to maintain these streets, so all of the maintenance on the street, including snow removal and so on and so forth, is handled by our ownership group. One of the things that you'll see when you come into the park, at the far west end of the property, at the entrance, is this large detention pond area, it's going to be a neat feature for our community, you come in and you see a nice water feature, it'll have a, a walking trail surrounding this, the pond, and there'll be benches there as well, so it's a really active area, and engages the community, and we think it's very beneficial, and it's a nice entrance into the, into the community to see that. We have also paid attention to the code with respect to open space, I know that there's a deviation request that we made, we're just a little bit short on the fifteen percent requirement, we're at twelve percent, but that's because instead of cramming homes together, and in providing this fifteen-foot open space, we spread the homes out and provided just a little bit of what you might qualify as open space, but we do have open space areas throughout the, throughout our development, we've got walking trails, some benches, you know, little dog, we have some, we have a couple of dog parks here. At the entrance, I mentioned where the pond is, we have a pavilion with an outdoor grill area, so they've got a lot of nice amenities that they're adding to this development here, and so we're very happy with, with that. I did want to mention, and I'm just about ready to wrap up here, there was a question about the CUP, I, I think it's, when, 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 when we first talked with staff about the need for a CUP, where I was like, why are we getting a CUP? Because the zoning district that we're rezoning to, which is next on the agenda or coming up, permits these uses by right. So you ordinarily wouldn't find in a situation like that where the use is permitted by right, where you also have to also get a CUP, which would be normally reserved for an extraordinary type use, but, so, when we talked with staff about the fact that the code actually says you need a CUP for this use that's permitted by right under the zoning district, I, I think, I'm not sure they knew why it was in the code, it might be a hangover from an earlier code revision that didn't make its way out, and frankly, it doesn't belong here. We, we didn't object a whole lot, other than to say, we'll, we'll go through the process, we'll submit the application, we'll pay you the fee, I don't know why we need a CUP here, because I will tell you, you know, our request, if there is any terms, we want it to be a permanent term, we don't want to come back in two or three years and ask for a renewal of a conditional use permit when the use is permitted by right, it makes zero sense from a zoning perspective. So that's all I would say about the CUP. Staff did a great job, really, if you look at the staff reports, not just for the CUP, but the preliminary plan and the plat, they did a very thorough job with the, the criteria that the city has in their code, as well as the, the specific code requirements, but also the zoning criteria, the so-called golden factors, those criteria that the cities adopt to look at zoning or when they look at rezoning, and I'm not going to go into that, I would tell you, I, I agree with everything that staff said, I think, except for the fact that we don't strictly comply with the comprehensive land use plan, we fit in all other respects, and we think it's an appropriate use here, given that the adjoining uses are manufactured home communities, we have self-storage businesses, one developing immediately to our west, some to our north, and I think they're pretty happy we're coming. So all in all, we think it's a very good plan, and with that, I would close, and take any questions if you have any at this point, thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
Are these, are these sites rented lot sites?
They're, they're all, they're all ground leases, if you will.
And are the homes themselves owner occupied?
I think you'll have, they, I think you'll have some that are owner occupied and some that are rentals.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is a public hearing item, if anyone from the public likes to speak on this particular item, you can approach the podium. No one approached the podium, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Sub moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner McNair to have a second.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Deaton to close the public hearing. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor state aye. Any against? Any abstentions? The public hearing is closed. Commissioner Ford, do you have any comments?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Hand?
No.
Commissioner Mater?
Yeah, just, I guess that, that kind of helps me out a little bit when it comes to CUPs, like I said, we haven't seen them very often, so is that why the conditional use permit application checklist is completely blank in our packet? I mean, it's completely blank with, I mean, the applicant signed it and dated it, but none of the checkbox are checked. And I, I think that might have added to some of the confusion as well, Bob, because there was no, nothing from our last item, number three, from an application perspective. So that is really helpful to have in staff report, I appreciate it. Just, just a question, I mean, I assume the one that's on file's got check marks in the boxes, right?
Should be.
Should be or is?
I have not checked the file, this was another planner who reviewed this, but I
Understood.
I worked closely with her on the actual review of the plans, so.
Just, just wanting to make sure things are crisp, because if, I, I, I'm only one commissioner, but when I see a signed application checklist and nothing's checked, just ask.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know the specific answer to your question, I would say this, there are checklists in all the applications, they're almost nearly identical, and we
They're close.
Check the, check the boxes on, on those, if you have a question about a specific item, I'm certainly here to answer that question.
No, I, no, I, no, no questions, I'll say on the checklist, just wanting to make sure stuff is
I can tell you, they thoroughly reviewed it, because we had several rounds of comments and submittals, and so we've got all the information that was required, stormwater, traffic, all that stuff was
Right, and yeah, and those, those were check marks on here, and that's why I wanted to make sure from staff's perspective that we have filed the, the application with the check marks as checked yes or no.
He believes so, so.
Well, right, but the question's to staff, so I want to make sure that staff's on the record that we do have a completed checklist application on file.
Staff will go on the record that everything was submitted properly with this, with this CUP.
Okay, thank you, Bob, and I understand there's, there's been, you know, the person who did this application is not here with us, so I, I understand, that's why I just wanted for, for clarity's sake to, to confirm that, so thank you.
Anything further?
Nope.
Commissioner Deaton?
No questions.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you to Commissioner Mater for asking me a question about the checklist, because I too had the same question when I was looking at the conditional use permit and wondering why there weren't anything checked off, so I appreciate your throwing us on that. But no questions.
My question was answered.
Okay. I have nothing further, so at this time I'd accept the motion.
After review of application, CUP dash two zero dash zero two, a request for a conditional use permit to the Lakes of Conestoga, located at the southeast corner of East Santa Fe Street and Conestoga Drive, tax
After review of application CUP dash two zero dash zero two, request for a conditional use permit to the lakes of Conestoga, located at the southeast corner of East Santa Fe Street and Conestoga Drive, tax ID CF two-three-one-four-three-oh dash one-zero-one-two. Staff report dated September twenty-second, twenty-twenty, and a site plan dated September eleventh, twenty-twenty. Planning Commission recommends the governing body approve the conditional use permit application with the following condition. The conditional use permit request shall not be approved prior to the approval of preliminary development plan and associated rezoning.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ford and a second by Commissioner McNair. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, item four B, Z dash twenty dash zero eight, for the public hearing for rezoning for a manufactured mobile home community.
Also, just to let you know, the, uh, CUP and the preliminary development plan checklist were all the same, wasn't the same, as part of their, uh, submittal. I was, uh, texting our planner from Oklahoma, who told me, just, uh, told me that. Z dash twenty dash zero eight rezoning and preliminary development plan, twenty dash zero five, associated preliminary development plan for lakes of Conestoga. Uh, this is a consider request to rezone twenty acres from R-two to family, MP mobile home park and C-three commercial districts to MP mobile home park district. And to, and consider approval of the associated preliminary development plan for the lakes of Conestoga, a ninety-five unit manufactured mobile home community located at the southeast corner of East Santa Fe and Conestoga Drive. As you see, this is the, uh, zoning map. It shows the, uh, existing uses, uh, to the south and to the north. Uh, and just a small portion, uh, that's actually zoned, uh, I believe, MP, that's on the south side of this. The parcel is indicated for light industrial and office park, future land use on the future land use of, of plan of the comprehensive plan. Although the requested MP-three zoning district is not a compatible zoning designation within this land use category, staff is supportive of the development request for the following reasons. The proposed, uh, site is located directly adjacent to existing manufactured home park with industrial and commercial type uses located, uh, to the north of the property across from Santa Fe. And, uh, with the approval of this request, the proposed development will be a continuation of already existing residential development in the medi- immediate surrounding area. Additional landscaping and design features have been provided, uh, by the applicant along the public right-of-way to enhance the buffer between uses. The development as proposed will provide affordable and tangible housing options for people residing and working in the city of Gardner. And again, this is the, uh, plan that you've, uh, you've seen as part of the conditional use permit. Uh, it shows, uh, two ways in, now, the, actually, three ways in and out of the site. Uh, deviation, uh, request. Uh, deviation request number one, chapter seventeen dash zero four subdivision standards, section seventeen point zero four, zero-two-zero, open and civic space systems. Uh, D, required open space. Uh, the standard is for an RMP zoning district, fifteen percent required open space, uh, proposed is, uh, to go to twelve percent. I believe the, uh, applicant's attorney had already addressed this, uh, previously. Uh, the staff comments on this, while the proposed development only provides for twelve percent of the fifteen percent open space requirement, applicant has provided additional shared civic space amenities, uh, discussed, uh, prior, and more space between dwelling and throughout the community for residents to gather and spend time in. That not only increases, uh, their quality of life, but encourages social capital and camaraderie among neighbors. Uh, deviation request number two, uh, uh, from chapter seventeen zero four subdivision standard, section seventeen zero four, zero-two-zero, open and civic space systems. Table four dash five, open and civic space types and contexts. Uh, the standard is, uh, for open and civic space systems shall be designed to reinforce the character of the area, anticipate development patterns, uses and project designs. Table four point five indicates the types of open spaces that are eligible for each particular area based on context. Standards and specifications for each open space type are provided in subsection F of this section. And the proposed, the proposed, uh, open and civic space system is not in accordance with any design type in table four point five, open and civic space types and contexts. Or corresponding specifications of subsection E, location criteria, and subsection F, design standards of this section. Uh, the staff supports this, uh, this deviation. The applicant, uh, was, uh, he basically disagreed and believes that the designed open space areas meet the requirements for open space. Uh, the primary open space provided includes an active wet area pond with a water feature surrounded by walking trails and picnic areas. And, and said the, uh, the applicant, uh, said the retention pond areas have previously been acceptable as open space in other city projects. There are also pockets of green spaces provided in the community in and between all the home sites where the community can congregate and children can play. Additionally, the applicant has added some programming such as dog parks, benches, and additional sidewalk contents, these open spaces. Uh, and they believe these facilities do meet the intent of the code. Uh, again, staff, uh, like previously discussed, while the layout of the sites required open space is not designed in accordance with the requirements and specifications of LDC, the applicant has provided additional shared civic space amenities discussed above, uh, discussed previously, and more space between dwelling and throughout the community for residents to gather and, and spend time in it. Uh, that not only increases their quality of life, but encourages social capital camaraderie among neighbors. Deviation request number three, chapter seventeen zero six, special district, section seventeen zero six, zero-two-zero, RMP residential manufactured and mobile home plan district, C, developed standards. Three, uh, point B, point four, home sites. Uh, the standards, all dwellings shall be at least fifty feet from any public street or other boundary of the community with adjacent property. And the proposed, the applicant meets this requirement along East Santa Fe Street, but does not meet the fifty-foot setback requirement along Conestoga or along the southern and eastern property lines. The applicant's comments, because the project is a single pl- uh, platted lot, the area adjacent to Conestoga is technically located in the street-side corner of the lot and meets the fifteen-foot setback requirement under the code. Notwithstanding this discrepancy, applicant is requesting a reduced building setback of fifteen feet along Conestoga to the extent staff believes it is necessary. Uh, berms and enhanced landscaping are being provided to offset this reduction, and, and the applicant believes the development is a well-planned community and meets the spirit and intent of the code's setback from public street requirements. Has the staff comments on this issue, while the applicant has not met buffering and setback requirements along public streets or other boundaries of the community with the adjacent properties, uh, we did meet with them, and additional landscaping and design features have been provided by the applicant along, uh, public rights way to enhance the buffer between uses, including additional landscaping, street trees, shrubberies, and a well-sloped berm and attractive fencing along the property lines. Staff recommends approval of the, uh, of the rezoning and associated preliminary development plan with the conditions outlined below. Please note that if the condition reads potential deviation, the, the planning commission has been directed to discuss the potential deviation request. If after discussion, the planning commission does not support the deviation as proposed by the applicant, then the planning commission would format some kind of condition of approval related to that deviation. Either that, the applicant must meet the code standards or some other amended deviation. Uh, potential conditions regarding deviations, one, two, and three. And as there's a suggestion most.
Okay, so just to clarify, on the agenda, you have four B and four C is two separate, but we have a recommended motion for both together. So, we're looking to hold a public hearing for both of them at the same time?
For the, uh, sorry, uh, for the preliminary development plan, and then I'll, I will, uh, present the preliminary plan after that.
I think the question that you're asking is about the zoning in the preliminary development plan. You can hold that as a combined public hearing. Just open it up.
I just double-checked it, cause it was separate on the
Oh, you can?
As opposed to one item.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll hold a public hearing for Z dash two zero dash zero eight and PDP dash two zero dash zero five applicant.
Uh, thank you again, Curtis Holland with the Pulse Another Firm, nine hundred West Forty-Eighth Place, Suite nine hundred, Kansas, Missouri, six-four-one-one-two. Also appearing on behalf of my client, Green Court Partners, and also with Judd Clausen of Phelps Engineering. We're here to answer any questions you have. I appreciate staff's comments with respect to, uh, the description of our preliminary plan. There were a couple deviation requests that were part of that, and we talked about that a little bit earlier. I think from our standpoint, uh, w- 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 we think that a, a nice pond with walking trail, uh, and an active, uh, outdoor pavilion with a grilling area, and it's an active area, and, and frankly, I work, I probably work all over the city. Metro area. This is the only place, this city, Gardner, is the only place where you, where you don't get to count that, or, or, where there's a question as to whether or not a pond like this, which is a feature to the community, is not treated as open space. So, w- we think that, we think that the quality and the character of the open space that we are providing does meet the intent and spirit of what's requested, or what's, what the city's, is, is the purpose of it is for. Um, and again, as I said, our open space, it, we, w- w- what we did when we ended the design of this was to, just to make the home site footprints bigger so that there's more green space between the homes. And frankly, this is one lot. So, we probably have about fifty percent open space, not twelve percent. Uh, so, uh, I think we're in agreement with staff. I, I think to the extent that, that we need a just, a, a deviation, I think that we, we, we do meet the spirit and intent of the uh, ordinance itself with respect to the amount of open space and then the kind of open space that we're providing. We are providing over, other, other areas like a dog park, like, um, some green areas, some, some open green areas, spaces for gathering. We have benches and so forth, and trails through our community. So we think we meet that, uh, at least with respect to the open space and the qual- and the kind of open space. And then with respect to the, uh, fifty-foot setback from public streets, um, we, we, we do meet it from Santa Fe, by the way. And in fact, we're giving the city some other right-of-way along Santa Fe that, just because they asked us. And so we did that. Also at the corner of Conestoga and Santa Fe, we also, uh, gave them some additional right-of-way so they can do a future road improvement there where they can curb the, can curb the road Conestoga where it attaches to Santa Fe. We actually lost one of our lots, uh, to do that, but we agreed to work with staff to do that. And we beefed up our, 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 uh, landscaping along Conestoga by putting in berms and extra landscaping. We're actually gonna have a decorative wrought iron type fence around the community, so it's gonna be nice. Uh, and so in any event, I, I, I'm not sure we needed a deviation there either, because I could argue it's a side yard and not a front yard. Uh, but in any event, that's too much for this. And I think, uh, again, some staff supporting it, and we're, we're agreeing, we, we did o- 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 provide some offsets. Uh, so, and staff worked with us on it, so we're in support of the deviation request and hope that you will be too. Uh, I did wanna make one clarification. You mentioned earlier, we're gonna have some carports. They're actually gonna be garages. And not on all of them, but we'll probably have a substantial number of garages that are in front of these homes. So it's, it's gonna be nice. So. Uh, that's the only clarification I needed on the site itself. And if you have any questions, we're here to answer them. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for applicant wise? Okay, thank you. There's a public hearing item for both of these. If anyone from the public likes to speak, you can approach the podium. Someone's approached the podium, so at this time I'd accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ford and a second by Commissioner McNair to close the public hearing. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Public hearing is closed. Uh, Commissioner, discussion, Commissioner Ford?
No questions.
Commissioner Ham?
Um, I just had a question about the staff comment. Um, it, the staff comment was, staff finds the plan represents an improvement over what could have been accomplished through the strict application of otherwise applicable base zoning district standards. So is this, there is no more reasonable option? This is, to your best judgment, the best use of this layout?
I don't know if I could s- consider my judgment as the best judgment, but, uh, the, uh, but based on the area out there and the surrounding uses, uh, we basically felt that, uh, the extension of this, uh, of the Conestoga development was actually in line with, uh, with, again, the surrounding uses. Uh, this property has been vacant for quite some time. Uh, there could've been a, uh, maybe a light industrial type of use that, uh, would go in, which may disrupt the existing, uh, uh, houses that are, are, uh, adjacent, uh, to this park. So, in, in our best judgment, uh, we would, uh, we would agree with this, uh, this layout.
Thank you.
Do you have any further? Did you have anything further?
No, nothing further.
Commissioner Maden?
Yeah, just a, an, another, I guess, we'll call it, housekeeping item for staff. So there's actually two letters sent to the property owners. Looks like one was back on September second, and there's one dated for today, September twenty-second. I assume that this never was sent. It's very incomplete, and I, I assume it was just accidentally put in there.
No, actually, that was an example letter. So all the letters were sent back at, uh, the first date that you had mentioned. I just included that as, uh, an example.
Okay, cause I mean, it, it's, it's almost the same, but it's not quite. There were things missing, so I just, I wasn't, wasn't for certain, so I wanted to ask you, Bob. Thank you.
Did you have anything further?
Of yet.
Okay. Commissioner Deaton?
No questions.
Commissioner Hanson?
No questions.
Commissioner McNair?
No questions.
I have nothing, so at this time I'd accept the motion.
After review of applications, Z dash twenty dash zero eight and PDP dash twenty dash zero five, a rezoning of approximately twenty acres from R-dash-two to family, MP mobile home park and C-three commercial districts to MP mobile home park district and associated preliminary development plan for the lakes of Conestoga, a ninety-five unit manufactured slash mobile home community located at the southeast corner of East Santa Fe Street and Conestoga Drive, tax ID CF two-three-one-four-three-zero dash one-zero-one-two, dated September eleven, twenty-twenty, and staff report dated September twenty-two, twenty-twenty. Planning Commission recommends the governing body approve the applications subject to the following conditions. One, poten- potential conditions regarding deviation number one, number two, and number three.
Second. I don't know if you wanna amend that, cause if we accept what's in the staff report, we don't actually have to have a number one. That's my understanding, right? Number one was only if we were going to go against the staff report.
I think all deviations, if they were gonna go against the staff report, we want to include them in the motion, is my understanding.
Right, and we didn't, uh,
And we didn't want any deviations, so I think there's no conditions.
Right, exactly. So we wouldn't have to see a number one.
Right, correct. Item number one, I said you're saying, you're, you're
If you just want to amend it to strike item number one.
Yeah.
So, just approving the applications, period.
Right.
Not subject to any conditions.
Um, I see that we have some looks over from staff.
Actually, I'd go ahead and just approve, or if you agree to all the conditions, just agree to deviations one, two, and three.
Okay.
Okay.
Then you do item number one. I amend the item number one to agree to deviations one, two, and three.
Okay. So what are we doing?
You just amended to say, uh, number one, agree to deviations one, two, and three.
Okay, number one, agree to deviations number one, two, and three.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All right, I have a motion by commens- uh, Commissioner Hanson and a second by Commissioner McNair. Do we have any further discussion on the motion?
No.
Uh, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, our final, final item tonight is item regular agenda for DDP All right, our final, final item tonight is item regular agenda for D P P dash two zero dash one one, preliminary plat for ninety-five unit manufactured mobile home.
It's for PP twenty dash eleven, preliminary plat for the lakes of Conestoga. Again, this is a preliminary plat consisting of ninety-five home sites on roughly twenty acres. There are two points of access into the subdivision. One from an existing private street, Park Street on the east end of the development, and another access off of Conestoga Drive to the west. All utilities are available to the site and will be serviced by the City of Gardner. Existing sanitary sewer lines are located to the north along East Santa Fe Street, to the east of the property, along proposed private street F, and along the southern property line. Underground electric lines exist near all property lines, and existing water lines are located along the northeast and west property lines. The applicant, staff analysis of the preliminary plat, the application proposes the plating of one parcel into a single lot that contains ninety-five individual home sites for manufactured mobile homes. The proposed local neighborhood, streets, lots, and blocks are designed to reinforce the character of the area while also providing continuous access to the adjoining neighborhood to the east. With the approval of the deviations from the preliminary development plan, this development is in compliance with, is in compliance with the land development code and is capable of meeting all the development and sites, design standards under the proposed zoning. The development is proposed to occur in a single phase. Both the stormwater management plan and traffic impact study have yet to be approved by the Public Works Department. This will be a recommended condition of approval. This development does not deter any existing development on adjacent property from meeting the goals and policies of comprehensive plan. However, because the proposed development does not comply with the designation of light industrial and office park, the intent of the development is consistent with the surrounding area, and approval would not negatively affect or deter future development from meeting the goals and policies of the plan. The design of existing and proposed infrastructure does not impede the construction of anticipated or planned future public infrastructure within the area. The applicant has provided additional right of way at the corner of Conestoga and Santa Fe to facilitate future through movement. And where occurs will be replaced, the current intersection at those two intersections. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat for the lakes of Conestoga with conditions. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat for lakes Conestoga with conditions outlined below. Number one, approval of preliminary development and associated rezoning. Two, approval of proposed conditional use permit, and three, approval of the stormwater management plan and traffic impact study.
Okay, at this time, if the applicant would like to speak, you can approach the podium. Okay. Anyone from the public would like to speak, you can approach the podium. No one approached the podium. We have Commissioner discussion and Commissioner Ford.
No questions.
Commissioner Ham?
No question.
Commissioner Mater?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Deacon?
No question.
Commissioner Hanson?
No questions.
Commissioner McNair?
Just one, one comment. I just wanted to thank the developers and staff that has spent a lot of hard work put into this. I think it's a quality of development, and as you look at the map, the use of this land area is a very good use. It complements the park. It fills in an area where there could have been some other things. Good work to all. Thank you.
Anything else? I have nothing to add, so at this time, I'd accept the motion.
After review of application, PP dash two zero dash one one, a preliminary plat for lakes of Conestoga, a ninety-five unit manufactured slash mobile home community located at the southeast corner of East Santa Fe Street and Conestoga Drive, tax ID CF two three one four three zero dash one zero one two, dated September eleven, two thousand twenty, and staff report dated September twenty-second, twenty twenty, the planning commission recommends the governing body approve the application such as the following conditions. Approval of preliminary development and associated rezoning, approval of proposed conditional use permit, approval of stormwater management plan and traffic impact study.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Ford and a second by Commissioner McNair. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against, any abstentions, motion passes seven to zero. We have no further items on the agenda, so I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner McNair and a second by Commissioner Ford. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against, motion passes seven zero. Meeting adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, before you all leave, I just want to, I want to make a few comments about some of the things tonight that I observed and things like that. For those of you who don't know, I'm Dave Knopchek. I'm the new community development director. The nice thing about not presenting cases is I get to sit and observe and make notes and watch what's going on. So, a couple things that I want to make you aware of that we found was interesting to me. It is intriguing that there's a conditional use permit required for something that's permitted usually by right by a district that's already in presence. And I have to agree that we have to figure out how we're going to address that issue. A mobile home, manufactured home property that's in a planned district like the RMP, I believe, in that district, there really is not a reason that there should be a conditional use, because you're looking at a development plan for that particular use for which the zoning was designed to accommodate. So, we're going to have to look at that section of the code, so I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. There was also a point brought up about the conditional use permits that we're going to look at because there are some limitations to our conditional use permits. Typically, codes will allow the commissions as well as the councils flexibility as to the number of years that are assigned to a conditional use permit, or if it's a permanent conditional use permit. This code is written a little strangely because it basically says everything's a two-year conditional use permit. Tough part with that is, and we're using the manufactured home piece here as an example. If they have a two-year conditional use permit and have to renew that every two years, the finance companies that are involved with development don't really like that idea that there's this short-term kind of process they've got to go through to repeatedly keep their use going. So, this is not the best example. There are other examples where this would really be an impactful situation where you're sitting there going, why are we limiting this, you know, to the two-year period? So, we're going to have to look at that section of the code also. I heard somebody say when I said, when we mentioned that we could do the combined public hearing, it was, we can. I kind of heard that.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know that was possible. That was me.
Yes, so understand, we do not, we're not required to put four signs on a property when there's four public hearings for each step. We're not required to send four letters. We're required to send a notice letter that covers those four items to the people that the notice needs to go to and the sign needs to cover that.
But none of the letters had all of that in there.
Right, and that's part of what we need to do is understand for our hearing, that's really how we can run the hearing too, because the general public, when they come in, usually is not differentiating, okay, this is only time for comments about zoning. This is only time for comments about this element, this element. So, what usually happens is people will come up when you open a public hearing, and they'll start talking, and they're giving you comments that are all over the place. So, it streamlines the meeting, and then we kind of sort out the comments accordingly as we have our discussion.
If it wasn't for me, so much about the fact that we were combining, it's the fact that it was separate items on the agenda.
Right, and, and that's where we can also do some streamlining with this. You still need the independent motions, okay, to, to kind of approve or emotion that brings all the cases together. But when we're doing that, I just wanted to say that when I heard, oh, I didn't know.
Yeah.
That's why I'm kind of giving you this explanation. I just want to make sure people understand.
Right.
That's a possibility. So, like tonight, where you were watching, as we're going from case to case, one of the things I'll probably talk to staff about is how do we combine the actual staff report? We can segment it so we don't have to make this transition four times.
But sometimes it's nice having it broke out, because a lot, you know, I, I get the combination, streamlining, that's great, but tonight, what if we had seen the rezon case first? Why would we have ever then had to see a CUP?
Well, part of my question is, why did we even have a CUP?
I didn't think that we had to. We would have went through the rezon process first because a conditional use permit, from what I recall, when we put the code together, a conditional use permit is required for a daycare facility, for something that requires that conditional use for, to get your alcohol, to operate a church and a, a bar next to each other.
Right, so we're going to work on those things. There's, there's stuff in here, and some of it is literally in the code. I mean, we were looking at the land use table as that discussion was coming up, and sure enough, there's a C in there for whatever reason. It's identified as a conditional use within that district, and you're sitting there going, does not make sense. So, I think we'll be cleaning up some of that stuff. That's going to take some code amendment works and things like that to get that cleaned up. So, just be aware of that. And I don't, I don't want to streamline just for streamlined sake.
Right.
I agree with you. There is a structure to this that also helps. So, we're going to have to try to figure out what works best in your minds, understanding that the public may be thinking differently than you are in how we kind of present things. So, just, just be aware of those things. One of the other things that we'll check on, and it was interesting when you were talking about the question on the comp plan amendment. I went to the website to kind of look and see what I could see what you were talking about. And one of the strange things that's in there, and this is why it's important, we're posting things that were clear about not just putting something on there. You're absolutely right. That chapter, it says new afterwards in that, but they also have, at the very beginning, it says the comprehensive plan, new in that statement, twenty fourteen. And I think what happened is, because that said that was twenty fourteen up here, they meant new because that amendment was in twenty seventeen.
Right.
So, that's where that came from, but there's a new with the fourteen also. It's a real strange thing, so we have to get that all kind of cleared up.
Absolutely clear on that, because especially with things like that, you know, there's no sign for a public hearing when it comes to a document. It's a posting as required by the state of Kansas within the paper record, and something like that for the staff report might be good to have for the public to say, oh, this was posted. Okay, and for me, as a commissioner, I, when was it posted? I mean, I don't, I don't really interact with the legal record.
Like I said, we'll get that kind of cleared up. It just, it was interesting because I started going and just kind of searching going, okay, I'm trying to follow what you were discussing, and it's out there, and that word new is used in a couple locations and really gets confused.
And like where there's like, I mean, I've, I've got it all here. I, whatever. I don't want to waste everyone's time.
That's fine.
But, you know, the, the numbering was off compared to what was already out here, so you just want to keep everything, you know, crisp and clean, and that way, there's no questions.
Yes, well, we're going to get there.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I, I know it's been, it's been kind of a rocky last few weeks.
I will tell you, on things, anything, when you do receive your packet, and I know this week it kind of got out a little late. It was a huge packet, and for the staff that was here, they were generating a lot of stuff. So, Grisky and Bob primarily worked on that because I was just coming in last week. Ben was just coming in last week. We were trying to pitch. Ben is, Ben has also been hired as a new planner. He joined the same day I came in. I didn't know I was getting a new planner until I got here and we had orientation together. So, so the reality of it is, is where we tried, we, I was trying to understand process as much as trying to figure out what's in content. So, hopefully, this next round with four of us now, and if the items are a little more manageable, you're going to, you're going to see us doing a little better job.
Yeah, absolutely.
This was, this was a strange one, and it was tough, and Bob, Bob and Grisky did a really good job of getting it put together and out.
Understand. I do a good job.
So, we'll get, we'll get those things kind of all cleaned up. That'll, that'll all work. But I just wanted you to be aware that if you have questions prior to the meeting, do not be afraid to email us with those questions. You know, if it's a day or so in advance, you look at some, some of those kinds of things that you were talking about. We can look into them, and then that way, when you bring them up in the meeting, we can sit there and say.
Hate to catch you guys off guard, and that's, you know, just one of those things. I knew you were coming on board, but I wasn't for sure who I needed to pepper with questions, because Laura did some of this, and this had Gons's name on it. So, I, I just figured, well, I'll just save for the meeting.
And that's what I want you to make sure. Always feel comfortable approaching me, and if it's something I can't answer, I'm going to get you to the right person. That, you know, that's part of the job. So, in that case, with it being Gons, I would have, I could have directed you directly to that. Or if we knew the answer, we could have answered potentially. But what we would do is I would tell you, even if you ask that question, we answer it sufficiently to you. Don't be afraid to bring the question back up in the meeting again, because there may be other commissioners who just didn't ask us, you know? And so, that way, we can give the same explanation and talk to that so everybody's knowledgeable of what's going on. So, I just want you to be aware. We're here to help you all too and to be supportive of you. It's not just about us putting together staff reports and throwing them at you. We want to make sure you're understanding and prepped and ready to go. So, one of the things I've told Commissioner, the chair here, Scott, is that I'm going to try first meeting with him a little bit. I want to get some feelings about how he feels about stuff, but I am going to try to reach out to each of you as I get my feet wet and finally kind of settle in so I can hear how you're seeing things and what we can do to improve. So, just be aware of that. It may take a little while. Bear with me. Drinking from the fire hose right now.
Did you come give us training about a year, two years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm like, never know.
Yeah, so I just, I wanted you to be aware of that. I don't want to spend too much more time. Bob and I were both looking and going, man, we get done by nine. That's pretty good for all the items. So, so I don't want to keep you too much longer. Do you all have any questions just in general for me or, okay, all right.
Welcome. Welcome, Ben.
Hopefully, hopefully, we're going to be more helpful now as we move forward, so, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I learned a lot.
Like, so they're not usually the. Yeah, yeah, last, last one, we were here for six minutes, and most of that was the, was the motion to leave.
Sorry, I'm sorry.